The agenda and I don't want to waste all of your time with all of this, but we've got the bathrooms up there at the top. We've put an estimate to that. The classroom renovations, we've got, you know, as you go down through this pool area renovations, repaving behind the school, and we've got dollar figures that we've associated with each of those. And all of these dollar figures, we've tried to put a little bit of an inflation factor to them so that they might be good for a year or so, but these are current dollars, really. So if we're going to look to do things soon, these are relatively accurate. If you're going to look to do things in three, four, five years, we're going to have to revisit those numbers to make sure that we're current with the market at that time. Can we go back one?
No, sure.
So, and again, we've got it more broken up into architectural, we've got electrical, upgrading the distribution, the electrical system, branch wiring, lighting, life safety. And then we've got HVAC and plumbing down through here. We've got a total for phase one for this. We've got a 10% contingency in there. We've got a subtotal for that. We've got a number in here for furniture and some of these projects. And the end result is that we are just shy of 25 million on everything there.
And also too, we can, if you look at the list, you'll see what has been completed.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so there's quite a few things that have been taken off.
There's a couple of here, like that one's got a zero, this has got a zero. Those are items that have been completed. Next one we went to was Indian Springs. Some of the things that we've done there, we've done the roof on the main part of the building, the center part, the pitched roof there. And then we just finished up the HVAC project there, replacing all of the old unit vents that are there, putting in new ones with a recovery wheel and new air handling units to provide fresh air to the classrooms. Because they currently didn't meet code, as far as the fresh air that goes into the rooms now. So, we've done that. That included also a complete electrical service upgrade. The new equipment needed a little more power than what the old one, old stuff did. So, and the old stuff was in, the old electrical switchgear was in pretty sad condition. We were a little bit afraid to try and connect with anything. One, we didn't think we could find breakers and things like that to be able to do it. And two, the condition was such that we didn't want to put anybody's life in danger trying to connect to some of that stuff. So, there's new electrical throughout. You can see kind of in a before and after, the hallway here with the somewhat popcorn looking yellow ceiling down through there to the new, with the new suspended acoustical ceiling and all the LED lights that go through there. All of that was done to hide the duct work that's going from classroom to classroom and down the hallways. So, all of that duct work up in there is hidden. And again, if you get a chance to wander through there, everybody, when we first started that project, all the contractors looked at me and said, "Why are we bouncing this ceiling all over the place? You're nuts." And now that it's done, they've all went, "Oh, this breaks up those long hallways and really kind of makes it so that you don't feel like you're down this just bowling alley of a corridor."
Yeah. The yellow popcorn ceiling. Do you know if that's the same material we have in central?
I don't know. I'm not real familiar with that.
Just based on it looks like.
And so, what is that?
I don't know. And that, we did have it tested though, it is not hazardous material.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's the good thing. It was not hazardous.
From 60, right?
Probably, yeah.
Is it popcorny or is it more like a spray foam?
It's more of a popcorny looking, yeah. But usually when I've seen that it is hazardous, it's a whiter. This is really yellow. And again, like I said, we had it tested and it doesn't come up as being hot.
It appears to be just aged, yeah, black yellow.
It almost looks like people spent a lot of time smoking in the building.
But it's gone. That's...
Correct. That's all up above. It's all completely concealed now. Getting into some of the things that we would propose that we feel need to be looked at. When we looked at, when we did the pitched roof, we looked at the other roofs. And due to the Esser funds that we had, we didn't have enough funds to do the other roofs. But they're beyond their warranty, I believe, and they're in need of being replaced also. Those are the flat roofs, the three there that really need to be replaced.
So, would you replace those with like TPO?
TPO, EPDM, depending upon a couple of different things with that, but yes. And then the other part to this is back from 2001 where we met with the folks out there and talked about the entry and security and everything. Some of that's been addressed in the last year because we did create a little bit different entry here with the doors that are already there, creating a little better control for the receptionist there and the system to be able to get in. But what we're looking at was going back to where the original entry to the building was and creating, again, like Denise said earlier, a place of, "Here's the entry." Right now, if you're familiar with this, we've got these metal canopies that kind of go over and, you know, "Is this the door? Is this the door? That used to be the door. Where did we exactly go?" So, we were trying to address that. We were addressing some toilet rooms in here. And then we were actually looking at taking the office functions that are here, moving them down into here, and then repurposing this for the kindergarten area.
Yeah, and one of the big things with that is that middle part, what you can see on that next slide, that's the original school, and there's some issues structurally with the flooring. And so, in this, we have that money in there to replace that flooring. And then one of the reasons why we were doing new renovated toilets, not only are they not ADA, but in those kindergarten suites, and they have reeder's nooks and ruse, and they're all wood, which does not meet any code. So, we thought we would take all of that out and put in the renovated restrooms there. So, you got a couple of issues going on as well.
Are they original politics?
I'm sure they are, yeah. And you can see the existing, again, like I said, you know, is that the entry? Is that the entry? You got this big, long canopy over top of it. And you can see what the original building was, where it had more of a grand entry there.
But also, there's no accessible way in the front of the school.
That's correct.
So, that's why we needed to put the handicap ramp. So, yeah, just trying to get the entrance to show up, give it, you know, something that looks like that's where you go into the school. And further and beyond is that ramp that we were talking about.
And please keep in mind, these are concept images. They're not at all any kind of a, "This is what you have to do," from an aesthetic or anything like that. These are concepts to use to budget what we're doing here. You can see here with the new entry, the new entry here, behind this is a ramp that comes up to it. And you can see currently, you come around here and there's the steps that go up to the door. And we'd be proposing coming around with a new ramp that gets to the doors. Once again, to the budgeting part of it, we've got our architectural section up there, picking up as many of the things as we could through that. Couple of things there that are, one that's already been done, we've got the electrical section, the plumbing and the HVAC. Now, the nice thing is, a lot of the HVAC's been done already, so that's a zero. That took a big number off of it from what it was. There's still some more that could be done that would be more efficient for the building and costs from that standpoint, and that's what we were proposing there. And you come down to this one and you've got a little over six and a half million dollars if you chose to do everything in there. Next one was Mary Hughes. We have replaced all the pitched roofs at Mary Hughes, so that's in good shape. It really made a dramatic difference. If you haven't seen Mary Hughes in a while, it went from shingle roof that really looked in sad condition with the fascias and the gutters that were about falling off the building and leaking everywhere, to now it really looks nice with the white fascias redone, the new gutters, the new roofing on it and everything. It really cleaned it up quite a bit. There is, can we go back one? There is some flat roof in there that, if I remember correctly, even though from an image, it doesn't look all that great, but I think it might actually still be under warranty. So, we didn't propose to do anything there, but we could do that too. Boiler, there was two boilers in there, one worked, one didn't. And the one that worked was limp and long on its last legs. So, this was, again, part of the Esser funds, if I remember correctly. And we replaced these two behemoths that weren't working very well and not at all, and replaced it with one boiler. And we were just talking a little bit ago, they're in the process right now of getting it started up and kind of working the kinks out of it. They tried to start it yesterday and get everything running. And it had a couple of gaskets that leaked, so they had to replace the gaskets. And they had a couple of piping things that Bill and I reviewed that they needed to correct and that. But they're supposed to be there right now, trying to get that thing up and running and work its way in. I guess boilers need to work for a little while at full temp, kind of burn themselves in a little bit. Couple of things that we've looked at for the future. Currently, the building is multiple levels throughout there. And trying to make that accessible and be able to get students from one level to another. We looked at an elevator shaft for that. And we've looked at an accessible entry to the gymnasium. There is kind of a pseudo one to the auditorium that probably could be cleaned up a little bit and make more usable, but there is really nothing to the gymnasium that's accessible. Looking at those, again, these are some of the things that we've proposed. The elevator potentially could go here and come through. We'd be able to pick up the majority of the levels. There's still a little bit of an odd area back here that isn't able to be connected to that elevator. It would almost require a second elevator. And we didn't think that at the time, that was a feasible usage of dollars, so it was left out. But bathrooms, again, we've got old bathrooms with urinals even that go all the way to the floor, various things like that. So, we were looking at renovating all the bathrooms to make them accessible also. You can see in this image, the gymnasium entrance is up several stairs. So, there's really no accessible way to get to that unless you're already in the building. So, you know, any kind of evening function for parents or community in any way can't really get to the gym without going into the school.
One of the things that we really would like you to do that's not a huge cost is that the special needs classroom does not have an accessible toilet. They've tried to turn a closet into one, but it just is not accessible. So, if you don't do anything else, please fix this toilet.
I've got a question. I know it used to be, like, if you go in and you start the renovations, are you not supposed to be an ADA code?
Well, you are, but the way that the code, the way that the officials look at it is that you're trying to make a good faith effort. And that's what this is, is you're trying to, you're showing that you're picking off things and you're looking at it and studying it and you're budgeting. So, as long as you have an action plan in place, you can solve that. Now, if you, this went on for 10 years, obviously you'd have a problem, but I think it's a realistic amount of time to show that you're trying to do something to solve it.
Doesn't it have something to do with the amount of square feet affecting like 5,000?
And if you're going in to touch a restroom and start working on a restroom, yes, you have to bring that restroom up to code. Do you have to do the whole building? That's where the action plan kind of comes in. We've put together, again, dollar figures going down through with the line items. And this one works its way down to about 9.7 million with everything that's there.
Got a question. So, like, I know this building's considered historic. So, how would the elevator work in on the exterior of the building with maintaining that historical?
Yeah, we'd certainly have to get it approved by the Tennessee Historical Commission. But I do know that one thing, we're proposing it in the back corner behind everything.
So, you can't see it.
You really can't see it from either the street. You can't see it unless you go back in there.
Well, you really can't see if you go out around the back.
Exactly. You almost have to go back in that alcove to see where we've proposed it.
And we tried to match the brick and did the best job we could trying to make it match.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, if we decided to go forward with that plan, that, you know, that it was a feasible option.
Ironically, if you go over to the old elementary school that the county now uses, or is moving offices into, we did the elevator there. And take a look at that, that really tied in well when it was all said and done with the canopy over it, the columns and everything, tied really well to the existing building.
Bring it up?
Yep. Brings us down to the last one, which is Sullivan Gardens. Now, Sullivan Gardens, the initial conversation that we had with Mr. Carter had to do primarily with the fact that the students go from the school over to the cafeteria, which is a separate building. They go outside, down a sidewalk to get from one to the other. Bit of a security issue that we have there. So, we've looked at a couple of things that evolved from that in our, not only what we saw, but discussions that we had with Mr. Carter about that. And one of the things that we've got kind of in blue here is what we would be proposing as a building connector. Okay, so we can enclose that and connect those two buildings, and you can go from one to the other and never have to go outside. While we're at it, the next option is, well, we could put a gymnasium in here. That allows you to have a much better connection between the three buildings. This becomes a true building then, as opposed to just a connector. And we're able to take care of a lot of the sins and the issues that are in the existing gymnasium that really doesn't serve very well anymore with its condition. Couple of things with that also then. Currently, there's a playground up in this area. Again, so students, when they are going to or from the playground, they're coming out and walking through the visitor parking area and the drives and all of that kind of stuff. Whereas if we turned that into more visitor parking or other parking, we could take the old gymnasium area, demolish the gymnasium, and that could become the playground where it can now be contained. You can go directly from the school to the playground. You don't have the security issues that you would have currently. Cleans a lot of that up and really makes that building function much better to today's standards.
I've got a question. On the fog before that, where the existing visitor parking is? So, if you connect that with a blue there, everybody parks down below where you're proposing the gym. Like, we don't have a whole lot of visitor parking there.
That's why we would propose this additional up here. So, then it can all be up front here, and they can use the front entrance correctly.
Okay, 'cause I was wondering if people park down there. How they would walk to get to the front entrance of the school?
Currently, the bus uses the loop up here and the parent pickup is back here. And then I know a lot of staff park back here. You know, certain things could be done with that to flip some of that maybe. But, you know, by taking this area here and converting this into the parking, really, there's no reason why this can't take care of all the visitor parking that you're going to need. Zooming in a little bit, you can see in the image here, that open connector that's just a canopy right now. And what we were proposing, got a little bit of grade change, so we've got some ramping in that. We've got a lobby here so that if this becomes a gymnasium, you've got the lobby, you've got some bathrooms with that. But you make that connection, again, directly from the school to the cafeteria enclosed and secure all the time. Couple of images here, again, this is the existing front view. And then this is a rendering of a potential, what it could look like with, starting right in about here is where the connector is, comes across. Then we've got the lobby area, the gymnasium, and then going on back, the connector to the cafeteria. Another angle of it. Going down through then, we looked at several things that we phased out or line itemed out. Each of the items there, there's other additional items in there. Door hardware, I think we've got some ADA issues there with door hardware. We understand there's some cafeteria equipment that needs to be replaced, so we picked a line item for that. The electrical distribution system, I don't think we have a picture of that in here, but the current electrical distribution, the large panels where the high voltage comes into the building sits on the floor, gets wet, is rusted at the bottom of it. It's a bit of an issue, so it's something that needs to be looked at in the near future. Can we go back one?
Sure.
HVAC, the general building is pretty decent from that standpoint, but we will be looking to replace the boilers with condensing hot water boilers, installing a new DDC system, digital control system, and replacing some of the cafeteria HVAC. All said and done, this one also is just a little over 7 million dollars in line items now. The last one here is just a summary of all four of them and where it would end up. All four of them totaled out 48.3 million.
I have a question. This is far back. On the east, on the entry, so that would have like front door entry, like it would be upgraded safety, like it would be cut off, so this entry and the lobby and stuff like that. So, that addition would include all that?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So, on the Sullivan Gardens one, what did you put that? So on the Sullivan Gardens one, one that we just looked at, can you just walk away to the cafeteria from the front of the gym?
Correct.
Because now, I mean, the kids have to walk outside to go.
Right, right.
There you go. That's all right. So you'll see as we broke it down, there's the enclosed connector. We've got a 1.4 million dollar budget for that. The parking lot reconstruction, we've got dollars for that. The gymnasium addition, we've got that separately. So each of those items that we identified have a different line item to go with them.
So you could do the enclosed connector without doing the gym?
Right.
Correct.
But we just want to make sure it's in the right place. Because if you just did a diagonal, then you'd have to tear it out if you ever wanted to add something later.
Yeah. Yeah, the goal was to try and plan ahead with that so that, you know, and whatever we do, and, and even, can you go back one more? There we go. So even, even if you did do the connector and didn't want to do the lobby, that could be done. So you've got the connector that comes through and, and you don't necessarily need the lobby. But then in the future, you come back and say, well, we're going to do the gymnasium. You put the gymnasium and the lobby in and you're, and you've not had to change anything really of the connector. It still functions the way it was done.
But don't you think that we need to do, to do the connectors like that, we're going to have to move that playground?
I think it would be to the school's benefit, yes.
Because there's no way, like I said, if people park in that little parking lot, there's no way of getting to the front entrance without walking around the whole school.
Right. Thank you all for listening to my long-winded discussion. I appreciate your time.
Any other questions? So figure your names.
I've got a quick question on that facility. Is there any chance that after things settle out, after the estimate is through the system, that some of these construction processes could actually gravitate their way down some?
Well, what's happening right now in the market is when COVID hit, supply chain, everybody knows this story, everything went nuts. So that has gone on now for the last two or three years. This is the first time that we are seeing things level off in about three years. And that's where we're at right now, is we're kind of level. We're not really seeing anything go down, but just level is good because before that it just kept inching up and inching up. So, and we're also seeing less demand, which means that, that keeps the dollars down.
For instance, the, the press box, we had that pre-bid today. We had six bidders come to that. That's, I mean, I haven't hardly seen six bidders come to a pre-bid in four years. Usually you get one or two, and sometimes you're lucky to get that. So to have six tells us that they're a little bit hungrier, the competition is out there a little bit more. Is it resulting in lower prices? I'm not sure yet, but it's certainly not resulting in higher prices.
But it could.
It could.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One other out of, out of order since you all are here. If you'll look on the work session agenda, we have the Sullivan East Middle School project update from Ms. Magid, our CTE director. I'd like to let her, and just in case there's any question, they did that, the expansion for Sullivan Middle, they did the work on that as well. So David, do you want to, you want to share the information there?
Sure. So just wanted to give the board an update on the project and the bids that we received. So originally the plan was to enclose the porch on the second level. And the bids came in, we only had one bid on that. And the bid with all the alternates at that time, which was February 29th, 2024, the bid came back at 855,852. And at the March board meeting, the board made a decision to add some additional funds to do that project. At that time, the inside room area was 1,520 square feet, and that was just for the enclosure of, of the porch area. So a decision was made at that time to look at adding four additional classrooms, which would be two upstairs classrooms, two downstairs classrooms. Two of those would be CTE classrooms, STEM and career exploration. And that came up to a total of 2,746 square feet. And the bids just came back August of 15th with the lowest bid being 1.356 million. With the Innovative School Model Grant funds, we had 471,800 remaining, which would mean that the, the additional funds, as far as the board portion, would be 884,200. So we would be getting, instead of one enclosed classroom area, we would be getting four total classrooms and almost double the square footage. So just wanted to come back to the board to see if, to get approval for the additional four classrooms at the additional cost of, above and beyond the Innovative School Model Grant funds. And again, that amount would be 884,200. Surprisingly, we had seven total bids, and those ranged from 1.371 to 1.831 million. So as, as Rick was saying, we're, we're seeing a lot more contractors coming out to do those bids. However, the lowest bid would be, and the board portion would be 884,200.
855,822 was approved.
At the March coordinating, that is correct.
So you're actually would be voting tonight for an additional, what did you, what?
28,848 from the original.
To do the project that we approved. So we need, probably need to have a vote for, to see if there's any problems with going forward.
28,000.
And that's including the 471,000 that the ISM grant has for the project. And then we had previously, as the board had approved, to do the, the porch project at 855,822. And then decided to, instead of doing the porch, to do the addition, which was the four classrooms. And so to do that, we're needing from the board 842.
Correct.
Questions from Ms. Magid or Rick or Denise? And that would be come from the, the, and there's an A thimb balance is what it would have to come from too. But that's where the additional might was coming from. Bring Denise, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay with us. You've got a good reservation. You already know a lot, but you're more than welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on, on the work session agenda, we're, we're going to also drop down a little bit so that our guests can, agents or if they choose to stay, they're more likely to stay as well. But no one has to not stay, but it's on the agenda says branding Sullivan County Schools. What we are working towards, and this is in an effort to increase our, our presence as a school system, to promote, to celebrate, and then to recruit as well. And I think those three goals fall in line with, with a couple of things. Number one, to highlight what we're doing in Sullivan County Schools. We're very excited about what we, what we do and we don't want to take second to any school system near or far. And then secondly, is to help us in sustaining our, our, our budget, which included parades. We said we can, we can do this and we can sustain it. This is an effort to recruit and get students to choose or to come back to Sullivan County Schools. So I, I'm very excited because one of our associate principals, Rihanna Dunn, had a worked with and had a working relationship through her connections with ETSU and the, the marketing and branding, the college or the, is that the right terminology from San Diego?
We are the College of Business and Technology with the School of Marketing and Media.
Very good.
Yes, in the Department of Media and Communication. So yeah.
So we were able to form a partnership that basically is going to have a professional, I would call it, from everything that we've dealt with so far, professional marketing campaign produced that would give us opportunity to revamp our websites, our logos, our everything about our school system, plus helping us to get that message out there to recruit and bring back both educators and students to our school system. And, and just to, to show our, our people in our community what we have going on in Sullivan County Schools. So the, the kicker of this is Ms. Magid, and through the Innovative School Models, has funds that she had already designated for marketing for the projects that we're doing. And this, this whole marketing is highlighting what we're doing through the Innovative Schools, which is Governor Lee's vision when he created the Innovative School Models Grant was, how will schools be different if I invest 500 million dollars into education in Tennessee? How will high school look different? So it doesn't just start at high school. It starts down with kids in kindergarten and moving all the way up through. So this, this project is to highlight as well those innovative strategies that we're hoping to evolve. So I'll just put a disclaimer, this, this picture was taken when there was some things going on at the schools, elementary school, you see Ms. Denzmore, Ms. Robbins, they're, they're kind of in, in year of the day of a special major school. I've got on shorts, so don't, don't get blinded by that.
I love that photo because I built those doors and the frame. So, so that was what I did when I was 18. I built that. That was what I did.
I love Brianna Dunn in the back. It was dressed like a student day. So she's in like pajamas almost. She kept trying to hide and not be seen. So it was, it was a good picture.
Don't mind the photo. I like, I like the photo.
So I asked Megan Piercy, is that Megan?
Yes, yes, it's official.
Dan Stokes Piercy. They were not married when we first met. They got married since and that's all. Being a short.
It's all because of you.
Oh, yeah. That was one of the words right before. But I asked him to come just to show and share with people about their, their vision of working with us. This is our steering committee, the central office and educators from the elementary, middle and high school who are involved in this. So I want to turn it on.
Awesome.
Mr. Charles?
If you want to try this.
I stopped judging my well, it's always 18 when I go to that. Or I was working.
Thank you. You have to sign up too. You don't have to sign up. Well, first, thank you all so much.
She gave me instructions.
I'm very good at that. I caught on very fast. Thank you all so much for inviting us this evening. We are really enthusiastic about the collaboration with you all. I am a master lecturer in the department. So I have been with the program for 14 years now. And in that role, I have been in charge of our CAPS-STEM experiential learning course. So this is for students who have taken the foundational courses and are ready to put all of that knowledge into place. And what better way to do that than to partner with a for real organization? So we have done work with many nonprofits in the past. When we were approached with Sullivan County Schools, it, it was kind of a dream come true for us to get back to education where, where our heart's at. So that's just a little bit about me. I'll let him tell a little bit about himself.
So my name is David Stokes Piercy. I grew up in Kingsport. Growing up, people called me David. About 25 years ago, people migrated and started calling me Stokes. Now that I'm back in this area, I was gone for about 25 years. I get about half Stokes and a half David. I do have my uncle David, the other David Piercy, taught at Sullivan North for a long, long time.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
He's a good man. I had him in school. Really good.
Yeah, he's, he's a great guy. Uncle David. So, yeah, so basically, I'll tell you a little bit about myself and how I came back to this area. I was at Wake Forest before coming back to ETSU and back to my home region. I first and foremost, a storyteller and filmmaker. I write screenplays and I make films. I've screened work on about eight different countries. I've won awards. I hate doing this part. My chair tells me I have to do it. So I've won some awards, so, okay. So I'm okay at what I do. What I specifically have honed in on the past six years is, and this began as initiative, I started at Wake Forest. I was teaching filmmaking and Wake Forest, anybody's ever been there, most of the students are very privileged, very wealthy. And students were making films constantly about this great frat party they just went to. And I, I just thought, if I see another one of these, I'm going to, I'm going to quit. Right? So I pitched to the department chair, I said, I want to teach a class that provides a service, right? That like, let's do something, if we're going to make a film, let's do something with it. So I proposed a class called Collaborative Filmmaking, where the students would work with me and they would learn the process of filmmaking by shooting a film with me. And the, the necessary component, what I insisted on is we will partner, we will choose a not local nonprofit that does not have the means to go to a, you know, like to a branding agency or something like that. And we're going to go to them and we're going to tell their story as best as we can and try to put it on a national stage. Right? So I won an award for that at, at Wake Forest, and that's what brought me to ETSU. Our department is specifically interested in brand filmmaking. So I, that's, that's my area that I teach for middle and graduate school. So I continued that endeavor at ETSU. We partnered with an organization called the Smoky Mountain Service Dogs that are extraordinary organization. We shot a film with them. It was nominated for Best Short Documentary at the Sunscreen International Film Festival, which is a huge festival in Florida. It was also at the Gasparilla International Film Festival, also, I think it's even bigger than Sunscreen. It's going out to a lot of other festivals and it was such a joy to tell that story. Also worked, shot a film for the Knoxville Leadership Foundation and an organization called Big Solutions that works with, in tandem with the government, mainly primarily for young kids that are aging out of the foster system, to help them get on their feet and get housing, right? And get social workers, they kind of stand in that gap and help organize that. So we created a film called Dear Destiny, which sort of tells that story through the lens of one young lady that's been really successful coming out of that. So when I was hearing, when we first met, I was hearing, coming from this region, right? My fam, my, I come from a family of teachers. My father taught at Dobbs Bennett. My mother taught elementary school in Kingsport. And I, I know this place well. And what I'm hearing is that you, you guys really have a story that's not being told. And that includes the struggles you face, right? That includes the things, but most importantly, it includes the things that you do well. Right? That, you know, I know the, the challenges that you all face going into the classroom, the budgeting challenges. I, I can't imagine what it feels like to have somebody stand up and say, yeah, we can do this for 30 million. Right? Like I know for that. So, but you guys go to work, work hard every day and you love your students. And so what I'm doing is working with my wife, who's teaching the ad PR class. She's doing a branding campaign. And from that, my class will be pulling information and we're going to shoot a documentary about Sullivan County. And the goal for this documentary is to once again screen it at the highest level. I want to, I want to. I want to hit, I want to hit higher than I did with the last one, right? I want to premiere this at a major, major, like, my goal would be to premiere it at an Oscar Ball by festival, something like Sundance. And I think there's, there's no reason why that can't be done. So I'll be working with my students and my crew and working with my wife. And we'll be in tandem, looking for, you know, talking to people and looking to find a story that tells your story.
Yeah, so I don't have the accolades that he does, so I have to follow up to that now. But as part of our experience, we really are focused on that collaborative atmosphere. And our students have already met the steering committee members and gotten along really well, have a lot of inspiration going forward. And we're running this as an actual advertising public relations agency. So you have a team of students from my class to Capstone class, and you have his entire class that are building and discovering who you are, what your identity is, what are your benefits? What are those unknown hidden gems that we could potentially capitalize on? And not just tell to your school population in the region, but even beyond, beyond there. So we're running this. I teach a class called the National Student Advertising Competition, and it's through the American Advertising Federation. And we have advanced to nationals several times through that experience. So the only way we can do that is through collaboration, such as with another class component. So we have Air Two programs going on here. Mine's the brand communication Capstone. His is the brand storytelling. But we have some other important players here, of course, you all. We are super excited to continue the process and you'll be getting updates and a big reveal further down the road. But we also have brought on board some graduate students who can serve as mentors and project managers. So these are students that he has had in the past and I have also had. These students have worked on the national student advertising campaign. They have completed the brand storytelling class. And they're really going to serve as mentors just to help everyone have that insight from a student who has done this in the past. Because we really want to deliver on this for you all and give it the absolute best that we possibly can. So there's sort of our collaborative structure that we have in place. And just to give you a little bit more in-depth information about what to expect from us in terms of deliverables. We are currently in the research phase. So our students have begun their research and secondary research, so starting to gain a better understanding of who you are as a system, the schools that are composed within the system, your student profiles, your employee profiles, and of course then, education as a whole. But we're getting ready to move into the primary research category, which is where they will be identifying holes in information that they haven't been able to discover and will develop primary research tools, which we will work with the steering committee in tandem with as well. So you'll have a lot of data to grab hold of. From there, we're going to gain some inspiration and insight and work on the branding strategy, potential logo redesign, what would a slogan potentially be? Any imagery, graphic elements composed of here. And we have a really good working relationship also within the College of Business and Technology with the digital media program. And they will be also providing student support and faculty support to design those elements. So it will be completely custom, built by students. We'll then move into, well, what do we deliver? How do we send out the message? What are we trying to convey to these different individuals and groups of people who matter and mean so much to us? So we'll then be moving forward with creative strategy. And we're going to develop a full media plan. This includes advertising components, public relation elements. It will all be encompassed in that media plan. So you're getting this as if it were a real ad agency that you're partnering with. And of most significance here in the unveiling and revealing will be the brand film that the other professor Piercy just spoke of. And we already have some really strong creative ideas for that that we're going to be in conversation with the steering committee and then be able to share with you all once we get to that, get to that phase.
And if I could just throw one thing in, in terms of, I want to make sure I'm conveying the right expectations. So a brand film, a lot of times people confuse that with like a commercial. And they're very different things. So the purpose of a brand film, I don't even like the brand part. Purpose of any film is to tell a story that hits you right here, right? This is, we'll find a story that communicates your values and your visions, right? And answers the question that you said, right? This is why you should stay here. This is why you should keep your students here. That story will likely be told through the experience of individuals who are teaching it, right? At some, we're looking for that now. But I just want to communicate that the film itself will likely be 10 to 15 minutes. But it's not an advertisement or commercial for, you know, the county. It's something I think that's, I believe, and studies bear this out, that's more than that, that, you know, we'll be able to produce shorter cuts of that you can push out on social media, that you can bring back people's attention to over and over. So I just want to make sure that was clear, because sometimes there's some confusion about that.
So our outcomes, as Mr. Carter already mentioned, we're looking for what your identity is to gain you more brand recognition through the efforts. Influence, we want to have influence in your industry and in the region and beyond. And then the key piece here, that recruiting element, the retaining of your students as well as recruiting from the region. So these are the individual deliverables. This is going to be a long-term process that we're super excited about and will carry forward for a year, for a while. This is what you guys might be most interested in, is where, how are you going to get involved in this? At what phase are we going to see more? So our pitch in the agency world, we will be doing a pitch of the concept. So that will take place in mid to late October, right after our fall break. Upon review, approval, oftentimes, you know, you will come back and say, hey, can we adjust this or that? Can we explore this area just a little bit more? We'll begin work on crafting any changes that you would like to be, like to see made. We'll have the filming and design work for the film well underway by this component. And you'll have your first phase products delivered at the end of this semester. And what's really cool is that our students can take this undergraduate course that I teach, the Capstone class, must take it their last year. And once I spoke with Mr. Carter and the steering committee, I encouraged some seniors who were going to be graduating in May to go ahead and take the class now in this semester because they can take it again in the next semester and it can count as an elective in the program. So they'll not only be crafting the ideas in this semester, they'll be implementing in the next semester. So you'll have a continuous flow of those students who have a really clear understanding of the project and its components. And the big reveal of the film, he has a lot of work ahead of him to film, edit, prepare, and deliver the film at the end of the semester. So we also have been working with Mr. Carter and the steering committee to identify when, where, and how that might look. We also want to mention that in our partnership with you all, we are going to be finding ways to work with your students too. That collaborative experience, we want those meaningful relationships to take place. And your students are going to be able to contribute in filming, in social media content creation, in editing. They're going to be involved too. So we're super excited for this to be, you know, a real strong experiential learning process that's not just in our little unit, right? It involves everybody. So that's what, that's what we're looking at. And we're super, we're super excited. And this has been a wonderful opportunity already for our students. We appreciate it. And don't hold it against me, but Zane Benover back there is also my cousin, so.
You can see where she gets your good looks.
No, he's wonderful. It's really cool to have the connectivity here with him being from the area and family here, so we appreciate it.
And anything that we get, we'll bring to the board first before we go forward with anything. There won't be decisions made by a steering committee that don't get a real amount of board. So we wouldn't be changing any logos or anything without your awesome thumbs up, so. And I mentioned the CTE Innovative grant money. It's at a bear, bear cost. What they're offering this is, it's like stealing almost because, but they're doing for us tremendous and it's not a cost, it's our, so we'd be very fortunate to have this partnership going. Do you want to have any questions for either of the Pierces?
I've been deemed Piercy one. She's number one or two, so. Well, thank you all so much. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Is anybody updated that we are working on? Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, will do.
All right, now we're kind of getting back in order here. We could, Mr. Burgett, ask for the city's updated.
I went to Dobbs Bennett.
When did you graduate?
I'm nine.
He bought your books, all kids. He was an amazing man.
Yeah, yeah, he is. I hear it every time, every time I tell people, you know, everybody remembers Suzuka.
Shuffle.
Shuffle, yeah. Thank you for saying that.
Absolutely.
Sorry, I didn't get them on mine.
Oh, there's a, there's a.
Well, here, you got to take one. Oh, option, I want to take, sorry. You got one to take.
Yeah, give me options.
Sorry, I didn't do them.
That's okay.
Very good.
Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead. Technically, we're scheduled to open up the West Ridge Road on the 10th of October, starting paving next week. So they should be excited. Think about a week to get that finished. Then after that, we'll start marking it off. Paving projects at Holston Indian Springs. We thought it was going to be fall break. Just got off a phone week before I came to the meeting. Hopefully get those started next week. So we'll meet with you on Monday. Maybe get started by middle of next week. So it shouldn't take long to get Indian Springs. Take care of them, then we'll go on to Holston after that.
Both of those were S R three projects. And we were able, we received a new allocation for money that hadn't been spent by other school districts. So we got about a $220,000 boost in our S R funding, still under the same time constraints. So one of the things we were able to do were to do the alternates on both Indian Springs and Mary Hughes, or Holston, excuse me, for the whole paving projects. And then we'll talk about one additional one that we may be able to get in there as well. We're waiting on bids on these.
Well, that affect the paving at Holston and Indian Springs. Does that affect them to drop off and pick off?
It will, but we got a plan in place to take care of it.
BTS has the connectors to finish the project over to HAC. Let's see it, let's see it. So I'm just waiting on a phone call to come back. We're going to have to plan that on Saturday, so we'll shut the school down. Let me know what's taken care of. Last thing I have is lighting over at East High is well underway, as Rick spoke of. That is supposed to be completed at mid-November for all fields. And speaking of athletic lighting, Ms. Stanley, they started today with the fields over at Sullivan Heights.
That replaced in the baseball. So, thank you.
We're going to fill it up down.
Getting the bulbs changed down, good, good, thank you.
You going down the highway tonight?
I'm going to try to stop off. I totally had to have it done before seven, I walked through in the building. I was out till eleven last night, had issues, so. Do I have any questions?
The football lights at East?
Yes.
What's the schedule?
It probably will not be this season, it'll be next season. Baseball, tennis, and softball will all be this upcoming season.
To get it done by next year, when would we need to start?
Oh, but for this, mid-November, all of the fields will be ready. But see the last football game, 31st of October.
Yeah, that's right.
I hope we might wait till.
No, we're underway. They've already got two of the bases set at the football field.
Were they able to share any of the codes?
One of them, from football to baseball. It's the one up near the first base dugout.
Did that add an additional set of lights to either field or is it just something that would have been planned anyway?
It's just something planned. They shared, Paul goes up, one side goes to the football field, one side goes to the baseball field.
Thank you.
Along with that, in the lighting, you've got two options in front of you. And this is, this is something, we just have to have a vote tonight on which of the options we want to choose. But BTS does charge. You don't really have an option to opt out of or not. It's just which one you want to take. Option one is spread out over time. Option two would be paying $38,466.04 upfront. I shared this with Mr. Loesch and she was kind of saying, you know, spread out over time, if that's, would be your recommendation, instead of just doing it all.
Option one.
So the cost would be the same no matter what, is there any interest or?
Remembering what we're talking about.
They tell you you either have to pay upfront or pay over time.
$118.
It's a difference in option one and two money wise, about trying to get to wind.
If it's the same, I don't mind doing the payments if it's.
If they're going to pay.
Yeah, the interest is band-aided, just do it.
It's on the backside, this one.
Yeah, but it doesn't say.
And then the others, investment charge of $7.04. But that has the $38,000 upfront, and it was still a fact.
Five dollars a month.
This one.
So this is for 10 years.
I think it's, it continues on.
It is for 10 years, your original contract is, but it remains for the remainder of the service. So as long as that meter's in place, you're going to be paying that investment charge as long as the meter's in place, or whatever that, I don't know what they call it. So it will say 10 years and that sounds great, but it'll continue. Those lights should be there much longer than 10 years.
Yeah, so.
We may be here 40 years later talking about replacing them. So you're going to pay that as long as that meter's in place.
So it never ends?
Nope.
So it doesn't have a sunset?
So all of these, you're looking at the baseball field's like $118 a month, the football field's $109 a month, softball field's 44. And then the tennis court, so each field's different, right? But you could do the no down payment. Oh, if you did the down payment, it's just $5 a month.
Yeah.
Just the service fee. But the other one adds $38,000.
Also.
So this can be paid now or paid later?
Well, you know.
The entry, I mean, does it not have the bottom down?
So we got 109. And then we got 43, 59. 54, and then there's another 43, 59.
Yeah.
So there's two 43, 59.
And 109.
I'm not a teacher when I do this.
And I think 105.
Yeah, that was the question.
Okay, this one's 118.
Oh, there's another one? What's the small table that we. I guess they're all seven, I don't know, 548. I guess they're all going to be 548 since it's.
That's 278, that's 2548.
So it's 2680 a month if we do the huge down payment or it's 31528 if we don't.
10 years.
For 10, well, like, yeah.
And then ongoing.
Ongoing. So, and I mean, it just depends on how long we think this will last. Do you think, you know, 40 years down the road, we're still using the same building?
Doing all those renovations, I'm imagining.
So.
You just got branding lots of new fields.
You'll be there for your lifetime and mine.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we'll just say.
If we see them leave back tonight, takes us from there.
Yeah, and then times 10 years. So that's just for 10 years, it costs us $34,017.60. Over 10 years.
At what point can they go back and renegotiate or change the figures?
Is that every?
I'd say every 10 years.
It's going to automatically renew every year thereafter. I don't know if it mentions a renegotiation clause?
So, because it's a $4,000 discount if, well.
Option one, right?
Yeah, basically.
They can come back renegotiating what they wanted.
Then they did it to us in the past.
They've charged us.
Utility copies.
They've charged us in the past when they had new business charges.
They're like, they say, get your power from whoever, oh wait.
It's called a monopoly.
That's why they have this set up.
So I wasn't involved in these, I don't know if you call it negotiations or what you call what's just happened for this, and I shouldn't have been. But I do remember when we did the lighting at East Middle School and Westridge, there was some proposals from B T E S. And I believe if we did the monthly payment, it was like a lease agreement. And they would maintain everything for whatever we were leasing. Now, we were leasing something a little bit different there. We were leasing light poles and light fixtures and that's not what we're doing here. So I'm not sure if that's even an issue, if you pay it upfront, if you actually buy it, or if you lease it, if you actually get it, I don't know. So it's a valid question to pose, I think, and then I think you also.
And then like, what's the life of these units that we're putting in? Like, so I know the building life is 40 years, let's say. But do these have to be replaced every five years and we have to pay for it again, or 10 years or whatever?
They'll get replaced, it's a good word.
Yeah. And then that was.
Yeah, I mean, you can go look at South, I'm sorry, Sol Heights. I mean, I saw where all the schools, I mean, they just replaced the wall.
Hey, they're fixed now. They're being fixed.
These poles have been there since 68.
And these are metal, not wood, like the ones that were currently in place.
Who actually, who did the negotiation?
It just is.
Or they just sent it?
So this is one of the.
I guess that I'm, and I'm only one here, but I'll guess I would say that I would want you and Ingrid and Matt to tear this apart with a fine tooth comb.
Yeah, because this is a 10-year commitment.
And find out, because we don't want to be in the situation that we were in two years ago when they sent us a bill. And we weren't even aware that there was a bill supposed to be coming.
Of $68,000.
Yeah, I mean. Yes, I mean, I just think we need to know.
This is that sometime we got to vote on tonight, is it?
No, no, no.
We just need to know, have more information about it before I can make a decision.
Be till November anyway.
Yeah, I don't think this will have a bearing on getting electricity, it's just how we want to pay for it after the. I'll have Mr. Cardy take a look at the options.
So, yeah.
Previously, or earlier, Mr. Burgett shared with you the update on the projects and he included a conversation about the Westridge Access Road. We have Dr. Leo, technical reactor at our Westridge here, and he's got a presentation. We had transportation director, Justice Steffey. We had representative from the bus contractors, Jeremy Blair was there. We had Miss Buckles for safety. We had a lot of representation in the room as they were doing their presentation, so we could kind of look at what potentials might need to be considered with traffic flow. And so, Dr. Leo, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you kind of share what the proposal is for the traffic flow.
Absolutely. You guys okay if I sit and do through this? So we're excited to have the second entrance. October 10th is the date that we're looking forward to. I tell you, first of all, Baker's Construction's been amazing. They have not only done an amazing job throughout our school day, I mean, there's been minimal disruptions. And we're talking about their, you know, dynamiting and all that, I guess, and, you know, I don't think we even heard a beep out of them. And they moved a ton of earth and so, and they've done it fast. I'm not sure he quite, I'm not sure he quite made it to what his original statement, but he came pretty darn close of getting done.
You wouldn't even know it with the roads, with the dirt and things, there's no evidence that they've even been there, has there?
Nope, nope, they've been great, they've been great. And plus, anything, I mean, I guess I can say this, I mean, anything else we needed, they jumped in and helped us out when we were looking for things, so.
George, you know that he's an East boy, don't you?
He also has the excuse too with the timeline, you know, we had like two weeks of solid rain there, two, two halves. Like every day just rained.
With the weather, they've done a amazing job.
And it looks great, I mean, that's what I'll show you with this. Is there a corner?
There is.
They green them?
Green, but, yeah.
So, there we go.
Reporters don't show up on TVs.
Ah, that's a good point. So, if you'll notice up in the left-hand corner, that's the area where we put the construction in. You'll notice tennis courts mid-center of that picture and to the left of that, in the current map, there was, you know, dirt filled there. I think originally that may have been laid out to be a parking lot at some point or another when it first was graded out. But on the new road addition, you'll see how that road follows that fence line and goes out into Henry Har, the new parking lot there. Now, that's just a picture I cropped off the other parking lot there. That parking lot will be there though for us.
That's 100 parking spaces, I believe.
It'll be 100 parking spaces. And that'll be a multi-use area as well for us. Talk about the flow of traffic, current traffic flow of that, of that area right now. It's hard to see, but I'll zoom in to a bigger picture, but what you'll notice just off the bat with this picture is less chaos in that new traffic flow map. There's just, right now, we're pushing kids and parents in the same direction, excellent. Now, I will say this, and we dismiss at 3 o'clock, our traffic is flowing by 3:20. I think that's pretty darn good for, and that's just having one exit. We come out, you see down at the bottom there in the roundabout, we're pulling buses out of there at 3:05 usually. So that has to all be stopped, traffic stops, so it backs up a little bit. Once we get the buses out, we get all that roundabout going again and then, like I said, it's flowing 3:25 and you get off and on campus. A 2:45, 2:50, it's pretty tight, you know, on campus for sure. You're going to see cars out on Lynn Road at that point. But, so with this new road, what that's going to do, like I said, it's going to reduce the chaos and not only that, but in the area. In this area right here, this is our biggest area of concern right now. Our parents come in and we circle them back around and go back out that front entrance. We push kids out that way as well. We have barriers, you see these orange barriers here to allow students to, you know, to allow that traffic flow. We bury this and we actually have a barrier here as well. Well, it's not, we just parked a car there. But we keep kids coming out from here so we can have, our dismissal comes right out this area. So we have this small area for kids to walk through. I have an administrator posted here directing traffic. I have S R O and another administrator here that was crosswalking. And then I'm posted in this area to make sure no one's getting into that turnabout for dismissal. So that's how that flow goes right now. We try to prevent coming out the front until our buses are off campus. Once buses are off campus, we move this barrier and we let our parents flow out that way and our students. They all start trying to go out that way at that point until it backs up. One of the important things, I guess, to note here is this front parking lot. We designate that as admin and really emergency vehicles. We have, but that's not to say we have a lot of parents that try to park in there and try to pick up and get out of there. We discourage that. There was eight, maybe 10 accidents in this front parking lot. It's not designed for pickup. There's a lot of blind spots in this parking lot. Instead of this, instead of the roads going all the way continuously, they're broken up. I think they're in three, maybe just two sections. And so, there's this, this area, this area, so we have a lot of accidents in there. So we discourage parents. They don't like that. They like to be able to pick up there because it's quicker for them. They, you know, they're cheating the system, I guess, per se, and they get out off campus faster. And I get that, but this new flow, what's exciting about this is now we have a bigger safety area for our students. When they dismiss, this whole area, there'll be no traffic flowing through it. So these students can come through and get straight to the car and out the front. We'll direct students out to the front and we'll direct parents out to the back of Henry Har. One of the reasons we decided to do that, Henry Har's a little, probably a higher level road to navigate, even though our kids probably do that already. But we felt like parents can go out that way. Students are used to the front, so we'll push them out on Lynn, push them down to Sperry. Shible ferry, I don't know why I had Sperry, I meant, Shible ferry. So, again, the only holdup we'll have is this roundabout. We have an S R O there. We'll probably reassign the administration to have somebody up there. We do have three or four administrators on this side of the building, two of us, one on the roundabout already to direct traffic. So S R Os help us out of town there. Barrier, barrier, barrier. Again, all this area right here, students can come out this, the gym and travel to that area. Now, if I can, do you click it to the, wait, let's see what slide, okay. So again, this is that zoomed in focus area. We fight, our biggest problem here is we have to stop traffic here right now. Parents will come and pick up and then they'll stack here while we're dumping out students. We stop that and then we let parents, but, you know, as you can imagine, we've already dumped out, you know, several students, so that line's backed up here already. So it just starts creating a cluster there. The other, the other issue is students like to try to travel anywheres and so we're having to push them over this way to get into the parking lot.
So do they not pick up in the roundabout there at the gym?
No, they do not.
I know they did like the first year.
I don't know about that. This is the pattern I think it's been going on for.
That's the gym right there.
The gym's right here, yeah. We don't pick up in that U there.
No, they, yeah, it's always, well, since the first year, it's been like that. I've always questioned that too, why we didn't use that roundabout, but we take a car through that roundabout though.
Yeah, there's no. Definitely no room to get in, yeah. We put sped buses, or our special education buses have been parked in there loading up and getting out of there. Yeah, I mean, that's, I get it, that, I just, it wasn't, it's not big enough.
That's not designed for it, so.
And we could push and stack. But again, I think the biggest reason this is, the reason this is the way it is, is because students have to cross into the parking lot. They block that off, so there's no vehicles crossing and there's none of that, so I think that's exactly, you know, that's why they ended up with that.
Dr. Leo, where?
Nope, I got it.
Where would students pick up and drop off be in the new design, since, because you've got that whole spot barricaded, parents would just come around the front there. What do you think?
So we got two different options. Our first option, you set me up for that, I was going to start tomorrow. First option, we're going to try a couple of different things. We're not going to just stick to something because that was, that was what we had. We're going to see how the traffic flows, see how the parents respond. First option we're thinking in our head is to stack into the parking lot and have students travel out of the gym area. Now, they already like to do this. They come out, I have stood here on multiple days and corrected them not loading in this area right here. It drives me absolutely nuts because they load and they still have to come around. I'm like, why don't you just load over here? It's a hard concept for some people to.
They like to go ahead and get in the car instead of sitting outside.
And I guess, someone said that to me. Yeah, I think Tate mentioned, I guess I would have been in the car too, but, so, and I don't know if you got it, like, you can do it for five, you can do it for 20, you can do it for three months. And on the day you don't show up out there, they're going back to the same process they had.
What's that say when they, you know, catch the wheel, nice and play?
They'll go back to it. So I gave up on that quest, but, so, kids will naturally migrate over here and be able to load in to their students. Now, one question we have is, what does this look like right here, whether there's a sidewalk on that or not? I don't know the details on that. We know we have a sidewalk over here.
Right, I don't think there is one, and I may be wrong, but I don't think there's a sidewalk there.
So, but we've got to remember this road right here will be, we could move this barrier down, we'll play with that, but this, this will be able to load in too if we want to stack in that. The other option, and for drop off in the mornings, it'll be here at this point, right here. We'll drop off, they'll walk right down the sidewalk and into this door right here, into the gym.
So they're going to be going to the parking lot?
To exit.
To exit.
To exit, yeah. They'll be, we'll be stacking them in here, that way we can pull cars off of the roundabout. The other option that we talked about was, and I think we're still on this one, no parking during the day, we're going to leave this. Because we want to do a multi-use parking, this is going to be banned. J R O T C will also use this parking lot. And so there'll be no parking in this area, so stacking is a possibility, where we can have parents coming in and park. That seems a little chaotic in my mind, but.
I mean, you could stage them too, you could do like different spots. Yeah, 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 like, you know, just make like. Rental car return.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's, that's an option we'll try as well. Same kind of process, they'll go in and they'll come out this, this area right here and go on to the road into Henry Har. But again, you see, this is a nice, this is a nice barrier of no traffic, you know?
That's, that's your biggest concern, is your pedestrian traffic.
Yeah, it starts with that and then it goes into that, crossing parents and students and traffic, and I think this is, so this helps out tons.
One one-way and one-dead.
I don't think traffic flow is 100% one that.
Well, if you've seen.
Teenage kid traffic.
This is fine for fumble.
Just some pictures of what's being done at this point, like, again, that's going to be the ban lodge, J R O T C. We're going to have to put some signage here, probably make this an all. We're gonna have to put some signage here, probably make this an all, we talked about making this a four-way stop. Uh, once those barriers are out, that'll be important. Um, this was a lot of, a lot of earth these guys moved in this area. Uh, just absolutely amazing.
That looks, that looks great though.
Yeah, and, and they made it, it's, it's beautiful. I mean, it's beautiful what they've done and, uh.
There's flowers on that wall where they was out there.
Yeah.
They get the, the act students out there.
We got, we got a nice blank campus here.
Yeah, you can do all kinds of stuff out there.
What they, that's hydro, uh, seed.
Yeah.
And it's a low, uh, low growth seed, so it hopefully helps with having the erosion.
Yeah, yeah.
Erosion.
So they, they saved the, saved about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by not taking dirt off the campus. And they relocated that dirt, you really can't even see it or noticeable, but it's in this section here and it's flat. They have a flat top on it now. Um, but literally, they moved that dirt there and, and the way they've made it is just beautiful. This'll be a, um.
Retention pond.
Retention pond area, so.
Kids ban their slide garden.
The, the grade on it surprisingly isn't bad either.
No.
I was thinking it was gonna be real steep, but it's a very slow.
So, so it's not, it's not as steep that we have to put, we need to put like fence around that drainage pond or?
There's guardrails, they are putting guardrails.
There are guardrails, but not like high fence or anything?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and here's that, that.
Cause some of the earth can be like super deep depending on the pitch. That one's pretty deep.
Did you say we're having a gate down there at the bottom?
To, to close it off as well.
So this is how it goes off, uh, to Henry Har.
There's a gate at that parking lot.
Uh, no. You think there's a gate down there?
Yes, there'll be a gate down there, yeah. Now, in the afternoons, we'll make that a one-way flow out.
So it'll be a double way, like a.
Should be a double gate there. We got a double gate on the front. Um, and I know that was in our last conversation with the.
You wanna share with them what the county's helping us with?
Yeah, um. Yeah, some of the, yeah, some of the, the needs we still have besides some signage is, uh, road bumps, some, some.
Speed tables.
Speed tables, that's a term. So some speed tables out on Henry Har, um, to kinda slow that traffic down as it comes right here. Some concerns that, that we've talked about is, is the, um, growth, the, um, just, just the blind spots, uh, this is, this is a pretty, I mean, that, that fence line is covered with brush. Um, and so maybe getting it cut down.
Are they gonna put any speed tables on the road going out there?
On this road?
Yeah.
We talked about, yes.
Cause that's a big long.
It is, the, the engineer, he, he was, he said, I'd be very careful doing that for a few reasons. One being you put speed tables up there, you start pouring the water and that can cause more problems than not. Uh, so he didn't recommend we do them at this until we see what it's gonna be like. Uh, but that was, that was brought up, they just, they weren't real crazy about it from the engineering standpoint.
I mean, it's pretty curvy.
What about rumble strips or something?
Something like that, that might, that might be a good idea, just to kinda.
Slowed down. They do have those high-speed rumble strips. They like it after like forty mile an hour, thirty mile an hour. Now, what I'm really excited about is pitching this, this whole nice Masonary, like, brick gate down here for us and that has wolves on it and.
Someone ought to put a farm gate up?
We're just gonna start with that, put a farm gate and then we're gonna move to, uh, I don't know if you've been to Emery, but Emery's got a beautiful campus entrance.
Beautiful.
We can have a school with a Masonary.
Yeah, I spoke with him last week, he's gonna cut some vegetation back.
I think, I think some's already been done.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
I think they've already cut some of that down to improve the line of ditch.
Good deal.
We have the big broad of the time that we rode down in there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, it's, it's incredible.
And now, a lot of the work, I think the majority of the work, I don't know if you, I mean, they had a, um.
They, they tile, the.
Culver?
Oh, well.
Yeah, they had, that was a major work right there, you see the shatter right there.
Yeah, you gotta put the drainage in there, really EPA standards and stuff to keep the water flowing.
I know our families are excited, so I appreciate this, this, and I know they appreciate this.
Graduation will be amazing.
I stood on the hill looking at the traffic backed up to the interstate thinking, and Mr. Carter's like, we gotta go, it's time. Yeah, so, this'll be, this'll be amazing. Football game, I mean, any, any event, this will be amazing. Now, any after-school, we'll open that up to two ways in. I'm, I'm not sure they're gonna strike that or not.
Yeah, he's marking it.
Okay, he's gonna mark that. And again, with parking lot, he's gonna, um, there's gonna be a hundred spots in there. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure if there's gonna be gates on this parking lot though.
I think so.
Okay.
If you're wanting to keep people from parking, then you're gonna have to.
Yeah, we might have to pour our barriers over there and just push them that way. I know, um, our band and JROTC are all excited about ending that off, ending that place.
JROTC and band both leave that, leave that space, you know, especially if it rains, the gra-, you know, depending on what kind of field we're using.
I, you know, we, we had one incident last year with, uh, which we, you know, a bomb threat that we had to move to the stadium and not having the second, you know, it really jammed us up. Um, and having this now will, will be, won't be as many sunburn children. Uh, and get them off our campus quickly, so.
And so this is, this is their proposal, what they're probably gonna try out anyway. If anybody has any questions or suggestions or anything, um, I'm sure they're open to hearing those. And then they'll tweak it as.
Yeah, I think so. I don't think anybody's gonna get stuck in it.
Hey, if you can, you know, if that work, you can always tweak it.
It's gonna be best of the best.
And we're gonna, and I'll make sure, we got a great communication booth for parents. Um, we'll probably have an open house or something and then we'll, we're definitely gonna go car to car, ten or more minutes.
So I'm looking at the dates, what's your first real test? So except for September 12th, what's next after the 10th? Next month, next year?
Probably.
Haven't got that far in my brain yet.
Yeah, it's a sprint.
That's a good point, what's gonna be the first test?
November 10th, do you say?
It's October 10th is.
Oh, I thought you said November.
That's a good question.
Which is right around fall break.
I'll certainly get you an answer on that, where, where the first big test will be on that week. I'd imagine it's gonna be a home game.
That's Thursday, the 10th is Thursday, excuse me.
You know, that opens on the 10th, that is during fall break, I mean, you do have a home game.
Oh, yeah.
That might be, that might be senior night.
I know it is, it is.
Senior night.
Right.
Cause we tried to look at it before, but it's on the 10th.
Dr. Ley and them working on how to get the information out to their parents and the community. And they talked about handing out flyers and things like that through the car lines so they're getting information out plenty of times.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think, I think they'll learn, they'll get it. I mean, that's one thing.
I mean, make a, make an entrance and say, go this way and fly around.
I don't think, yeah, they don't have a choice, once they get in line, they're gonna follow whatever's in front of them, so. It'll be the kids that we have to, cause, you know, they're always looking for the, the easy way out.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ley. Uh, last thing on the work session agenda, uh, Mr. Lowe, do you wanna share on the internal school fund audit?
I sure am. And if you ever get bored at night and can't sleep, I've provided you with materials that will assist you with that as well. Being an accountant, I like audit. But I'll just tell you one thing, an audit report, there's nothing more boring than an audit report. Unfortunately, I can report to you this year that this is the most boring audit report I've ever seen because I don't even have a page of findings to show you.
Yeah.
Yes, who knows, sir? This is the internal school funds audit. Um, and what that means is, for you new guys, um, the money that is handled just at the school. So would that be athletics, that might be, um, fees that they're flexing, random fundraisers that they do, um, lots of different things. That goes through the internal school fund audit. In that, we are audited as a system. And if you get findings, you get findings as a system. And as you know, we have fifteen schools. So for us to get a perfect audit, that means fifteen schools have to get a perfect audit. So I'm happy to report to you, normally I'll say turn to page number eighty-two and I'll show you a list of all of our findings. If you open that big thick one, did you get my instructions?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll see there is no page eighty-two. Um, if you go to the last page, I think the last page is a summary of audit findings for the previous year. And you will see, it is blank.
No fire here?
Um, I will not say it's perfect because there were some things they suggested to us. Um, one thing was we needed to correct the policy because C double S double A was doubling the fines that they could give to a visitor at a ballgame. They wanted us to address that in our policy, so we did. Um, but it's not an audit finding. Yeah, this is probably the best audit that I have seen since I've been here since 2015. And I can tell you that every bookkeeper that we have puts in blood, sweat and tears to get that done. We pay them for a certain amount of days and they overexceed that every single year. They are coming in during the summers, our only full-time year-round bookkeepers are our high school bookkeepers. So every elementary and middle school bookkeeper is coming in when they're not even on the clock and they're taking care of things, because as you know, bills don't stop just because school closed. They're paying all kinds of things. So I'm very proud of those ladies and I plan to have a, a meeting with them to celebrate this because we usually have a meeting to go over how we can make ourselves better. I have no suggestions to make them better, I just say, keep doing what you're doing, keep working hard because they've done a great job. So if you see a school bookkeeper, I always say this, but if you see them out, you might wanna say, hey, I heard you had a great audit, because they put in a lot of labor for this and, um, it reflects greatly on their efforts.
I'd love to invite them to a board meeting.
Can you send us a list?
List of bookkeepers, I sure will.
Email that to us.
I'll send you a list of their names and their locations, so you'll know where they're at.
And we could just send them an email.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I'll give you a list of names, emails and where they're at, so you'll know what to do on that.
I think we're gonna have a board meeting.
That'd be great. That'd be great, because they, you'll notice their names don't appear on any of this and their principals' names are the ones that come with the letters if we do have a finding. But they take full responsibility for this and it, when they do have a finding, I've always told them an audit finding is not a bad thing. A repeat audit finding is a bad thing, but an audit finding, the first time we get it is just a chance for us to do better. And they have done that, they have taken every finding we have and do better. Um, but they take it personally when they get something that, if it says whatever school didn't do whatever, even though it may not be their problem that they had to, we got that finding, it, they take it personally. So I think they should take it personally when they get a good one as well. That's all I got.
And I'm being short-sighted not to recognize Ingrid's setting in the work that she does. We're very fortunate, we have Kirsten as well. And, uh, they, they've been working really great on helping with. Ingrid's leadership and working with those, uh, bookies at the school level is just, it's a result of this. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Lowe. Uh, I, I know we're running a little bit tight, we've got about ten minutes. I don't wanna rush through the regular agenda, but, uh, we'll go through this rather quickly. And then if we need to, uh, we'll just discuss items, uh, during the meeting. Uh, before anything else, I know we're gonna do this, uh, during the regular meeting, but welcome, Mr. Rickers, Mr. McCann.
Thank you, sir.
Glad to have you join us and, uh, look forward to working with. And, but the first thing on the agenda tonight has to be the election of the, uh, the chair and vice chair. I'll, I'll open that and, uh, take nominations for the chair. After the chair's been nominated and voted for, that person will then take it from there and do the, the vice chair nominations. So we'll take care of that at the very first thing, even before the approval of the, the agenda or the consent agenda. Consent agenda has, uh, our minutes from, uh, last month. Uh, set a field trip request, uh, a dual enrollment or dual credit, uh, agreement between the two high schools and MTSU. We do dual enrollment and dual credit MOUs with, with all of our post-secondary partners. Uh, so this is just a, just a memorandum of understanding, nothing new in there. Project on trap is tutoring funds that will be used if we didn't think we were gonna end up getting. It's to support tutoring in our elementary grades, uh, with Nice Longer. It's just an MOU that, that need approval for there to, to agree to use or allow Nice Longer to provide us that service. Uh, and then to cop your leases, uh, one for Hoston Elementary and one for Sullivan and Heights Middle School. So you, you have that information, you're packing it in the online. If you have any questions, uh, we'll discuss each of those, uh, I suppose is normal. And what we normally would be doing in the past. So, all right, I have a few things on public comment. Uh, but I wanna make sure and recognize, uh, my notes, so I don't leave out anything. Uh, no, okay. Uh, the T, TSBA Fall District Meeting is September twenty-third and that's at Chuck E. Doe. So, uh, did send out in the weekly memo, if you wanna ride in a van, uh, just let me know, uh, if that's something we wanna do, if we just wanna all meet there at Chuck E. Doe. Uh, so please let me know that pretty, pretty soon.
What time is it? Was that, that was like to be determined on their.
Yeah, I don't know if we, let me see what Christie gets here, we got the final. Generally speaking, it's.
It's fairly early.
Four, four o'clock or something, they, they do a little bit.
I mean, it's not like a morning.
No, 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 it's after school, because they typically will do it in their school campuses, one of the school campuses.
Okay.
So it's after, after school.
Yeah, four thirty.
Okay, thank you, thank you, four thirty. So we would, we would need to leave here between three thirty and four, sure, probably three thirty at least.
Yeah, I'm just, I'll just drive them home, though, because I'm already down there.
You're coming. So just, just let me know that if we do need to. Uh, on the twenty-fifth, uh, Board Attorney Chris McCarthy will do a, a board refresher and training session with their two new members and everyone else, uh, on the twenty-fifth at four thirty. We are gonna meet at four o'clock in closed session. So that, that's just, uh, something Mr. McCarthy suggested, because we do have a couple of things we need to talk about in private, so we'll, we'll, we'll be there.
September second?
On the, on the twenty-fifth. Before we do the training, he'll be here, so he'll, he will talk to us, uh, about a, a matter we need to make a decision about that he would share with us.
You said the twenty-fifth or the twenty-third?
The twenty-fifth, excuse me.
Twenty-third's the one.
It's the SBA?
Yeah, the twenty-third is the Fall District Meeting. The twenty-fifth is the board training here at Central.
They're on these, I mean, on these.
Yes, oh, yeah, everybody, everybody.
Oh, okay, I thought you said just me.
Well, no, everybody, we can have the best, because there will be that little session at four o'clock as well. Then on October.
I'm trying to write this down, four o'clock?
Uh, yes, four o'clock, yes. And then, uh, on October second, it will be a closed meeting as well. It's a safety meeting, so we'll be talking about some sensitive issues there that, uh, we probably just don't want the, uh, everybody out there hearing. So that dates on the security systems that we're, uh, installing and the, the MOU with our, uh, Sheriff's Department. Just, just an update for the board to let you know all the things safely that we have invested in and have, have in place. And then Fall Break is the seventh of the eleventh. And then on November fifth is an in-service date and there will be no students, uh, in, in our schools on the fifth. So share those as, uh, director's comments there. Uh, special recognition, we have two twelfth team champions that will be here to be recognized, the Westridge Squad and the Sullivan Central Middle School Squad. So we'll recognize those tonight. Uh, Mr. Stebbi. Uh, Mr. Stepi, uh, bus supervisor, is not here this evening, he, his daughter is actually twirling. And so she, uh, is in performance tonight, so he won't be here, but we are gonna recognize, uh, one of the bus drivers for a, a bus driver of the month, uh, recognition. And then Ms. Griselle, uh, we just wanna recognize her for the work that she did to get everything with the payroll completed so that it was out with the, uh, new pay raise included for the support staff. And that was a Friday, she got it on Friday, was able to work on it on a Saturday, Sunday, and it had to be ready to go on Monday, so that they would be paid on that following Thursday, and so Monday was it, so she worked. And she was actually off on Friday and she came in and worked, and then she worked all weekend and, uh, and, and she didn't get paid for that.
Do they give her comp time or anything?
She does get comp time, yes.
I wanna make sure you got some.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. And then she turned right around and got the, uh, professional staff's pay ready for the twentieth, which was very close to that, that date. So Amy, Amy did a tremendous job, she doesn't want any praise, she doesn't want any recognition.
She's getting it though.
No, we wanna give it to her, exactly. Uh, we, we did have the contracts that, uh, we, we need to bring back just for, uh, approval for the bus contracts. Those are already in place and they're all good, but we just need a vote to approve the contracts, uh, with the bus companies. Uh, the lighting project, or no, the innovative project, what we talked about earlier, for Sullivan East Middle, adding on those four classrooms. And then we're gonna, I guess, we're not gonna have any kind of vote on this lighting project until we get Chris McCarthy, so we'll table that. The, uh, ca-, uh, calendar for twenty-five, twenty-six, I have results that I'll pass out from the, the, the staff and faculties. Uh, vote for the two options, uh, which one they preferred and getting that approved by the, the, uh, board. Uh, there's a change that you have in there on a, a grading system policy about not being able to do grades, uh, that are reflective of zero, uh, to raise the grade. So in other words, you can't say the, the bottom is a twenty-four or something like that.
Cause you can't give a kid a fifty where they could then possibly succeed.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know there's different philosophies on that. Uh, but the law has taken that away from us now, so.
So it's just accepting.
Go Nashville again, is all I gotta say.
And then we have a set of budget amendments, which is basically just, uh, decisions of, of either accepting or moving uh, from one line out to another. Those are all pretty much for our new board members, basically just standard, right? They're cleaning up, cleaning up lines, so unless you have, uh, specific questions there, uh, we'll, we'll, depending on who the chairman, I keep looking. Or chairman Ben, it's Price, but then we'll, we'll hopefully be able to group those together in, in both of those. And then, uh, down D, budget resolutions, basically the same thing. We have a, a law settlement that we've received around thirty-three, it did end up being thirty-three thousand after we got the check. It is about thirty-three thousand dollar settlement from the, the Juul, uh, vaping. And we use that for the Catch My Breath program, which is our, our intervention program for the vaping. Uh, public safety grant, that's just money that's been carried over, uh, from last year. And then the innovative school model is, is taking that, it's a four-year grant and we have to each year renew that in what's left. So, uh, we would like to get those three, group those together. And then public comments after that, and then everybody will have a chance to.
And, and just for, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. McKinley and Mr. Vickers, the Juul settlement is not anything that, that we did lawsuit, it was just.
Blas action, yeah.
Blas action.